Good evening and welcome. We will call this Monday, August 10th, Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you would also join us for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First up this evening is agenda approval.
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Great. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please sign or no sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will call upon our attorney to lead us in our one public hearing that we have scheduled this evening.
Thank you. There will be a public hearing conducted this evening by the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules will apply to the hearing. A public notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements will be recorded in a similar manner and made a part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement may be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself when you come forward. No one has signed up. The public hearing tonight is called to order. It's for the purpose of the Commissioners considering the proposed financing contract for continued construction of the Public Works Complex Phase Two Revised. Amount to be financed not to exceed 2.337660. Does anyone wish to address the board on this matter? There does not seem to be public comment.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Or questions for staff or questions?
No, I think we've been over it. I'm pretty happy. I recovered again. I'm pretty happy with it.
Okay. Well, a motion would be in order then.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed financing contract to approve the attached resolution regarding the proposed construction and financing arrangement of the Public Works Complex Phase Two Revised for the Town of Kill Devil Hills, to approve the financing package for the Public Works Complex Phase Two Revised, and to close capital project ordinance number 04-13.
I'll second.
And also, we need to adapt some ones, if you don't mind, adopt the attached new ordinance for the Phase Two Revised Capital Project. Sorry.
And that.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor? Did you?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please sign or no sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll move on then to the first time set aside this evening for public comment. This is the time for anyone in the audience to address the board on any topic to bring that to our attention. We do ask if you would keep your comments, if you're speaking as an individual, to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would limit those comments to five minutes, please. We had a sign-up sheet. Only one person signed up, so we'll start with Matt Byrne. Welcome, Matt. And then we'll call if anyone else from the floor has any items to share. Good evening.
Good evening. Matthew Byrne, 1623 Woodup. Good news. I just wanted to let you know, I spoke to the towns of Nagshead and the Commissioners at Dare County on their cycle this month. And I just received an email from Cliff Ogborne at the town of Nagshead. And there is a potential to have some light recreation on the Fresh Pond. So that AE designation that is there, that enables that body of water to be an emergency water supply for our county, doesn't restrict the use of that body of water for any kind of light recreation. So we're making some advances on that. So if I might request that this board put something in writing perhaps with any level of support that you folks might have to the town and to the county. I think that would kind of have an effect, being that you have a little bit of say over the fact that it does kind of straddle the borders of the two towns. And I think at our meeting, Ms. Mayor, that there was some offering, that there might be some potential use of Public Works in the event that money might have become an issue. And I think that's probably the only drawback now, is that the Nagshead's focusing on Doughty Park. And we just need a little bit of access from the county's soccer field. That Satterfield Landing can't be another 30 yards from the corner, the northwest corner of that facility and the southern tip of the pond. Just take the fence down, cut us a little path, we'll be good to go. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, ma'am.
Matt, before you step away real quick, did Cliff indicate anything in his email about next steps?
He did not, no ma'am.
Okay.
I just need to follow back with him and thank him for replying to me. I just got the email actually on my way over here.
Great, okay.
So I was kind of doing a little more begging than I had anticipated. But we're making progress. And we're going to get some kayaks and catch a little fish out of that pond.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for sharing the update, certainly.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay. Then with the board's permission, we'll move on to new business. Okay. We have under item number one for new business, we have three proposed, or three proposed public hearings, public hearings to schedule on different proposed amendments to Chapter 153 zoning. We can go through each one of them, but yet make one motion since we are looking at scheduling these for the same night. Or we can take them each individually and schedule a motion for three separate motions. Whichever you all prefer. Is it good with one motion or do you want three motions?
One motion.
One motion. Okay. Then Greg, would you mind just kind of introducing all three in a row? And then we can go back and, okay, great, thank you.
Well, the first one tonight is, will be regarding outdoor displays and storage. The board may recognize that we wrestle with this for some several, eight years. And it came to you at the last meeting and didn't have a consistency statement from the planning board. And since that time, the planning board has provided a consistency statement. And the recommendation is to schedule a public hearing with the consistency statement on September 21st. And this would, the main gist of this ordinance is, is it requires, it differentiates some definitions between storage and display. And it requires some standards for the display, that it not be torn or tattered. And that it would also, some location for the storage that it be in the side or rear of the primary structure and screen are located in some kind of enclosure. And there are some exceptions, lumber yards, garden centers, automobile sales are excluded from, obviously would be excluded from these regulations. So that's the first one. The second one, kind of dovetails with the first one. And it has to do with our modifying the pool and hot tub sales to eliminate the restriction on outdoor display, anticipating the fact that this, the outdoor display may be adopted by the board, that I explained previously. You wouldn't single out any business, it would be for all businesses. And there's also some housekeeping that was to be done. We had hot tubs and spas in one portion of our ordinance. And then we would like to put pools and hot tubs in the proper section of the retail businesses, which is more closely akin to. So that's the second section. And it, I think again involves, I should put this up for people, the housekeeping and, housekeeping and the change that led pools and hot tubs have outdoor display. And the final, the final recommendation for public hearing tonight is on recombination of lots, which is something that the attorney and our staff has been discussing for quite some time. And basically, it allows a single development across lot lines. If you can think of several different lots and a building being put in the middle of it, well, it's going to violate the setbacks for the smaller lot lines. But this would require either a legal document to recombine the lots into one parcel or a legal document that would allow a covenant of sort that would allow that buildings, as long as a building is used for the single use, it could violate that setback. So it would be something that'd be approved by our time of term. And all three hearings were recommended for September, September 21st. And I think all three of them have a consistency statement.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Greg. Does anyone have any questions for Greg? Okay. Does anyone like to make a motion about scheduling these three public hearings?
I make a motion that we schedule all three items for public hearing on Monday, September 21st, 2015, as presented at 5:30.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please sign or no sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The second item under new business are two appointments to the planning board. We have two current members of the planning board, James, Chip Almny, and Stan Clow that are up for appointment, or their terms are expiring. Both have expressed interest in being reappointed. It's the pleasure of the board.
Any objections? Not when they're here.
They're both staring at us.
Makes that hard.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint both Mr. Almny and Mr. Clow.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please sign or no sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And thanks for your service, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to Commissioner's Agenda. Ms. Riddick?
Nothing today.
Ms. Appleman?
Actually, the only thing I have right now is, we didn't do response to public comment.
Okay.
And I'm wondering what we do, because I'm with Matt on trying to move forward on free and fresh pond. So is there anything that we need to work on?
We had had, gosh, this has been Matt, right? Did he stay or did he leave?
He had to step out.
Oh, okay. I don't remember how many months ago, but Steve and Matt, myself, and the mayor of Nagshead, Greg, were you, Greg was there. We had kind of a sit-down coffee and at that point, we're talking about next steps, which is a lot of what Matt has followed up on and done. So that's why I was asking him if Cliff had laid out anything. But if they hadn't, we may want to kind of pull a small group together to really see what are the next steps. So Steve will follow up after this and talk to Matt and talk to Cliff and see what his thoughts are as well. So I would think between now and the next time we get together, at least we can have an idea of what's, you know, what's the game plan to get there.
If I can do anything with any.
Okay, great, thank you.
That was it for me.
Okay. Ms. Reba?
Just want to thank staff again for a wonderful national night out. It was great. The weather cooperated. Divine intervention is always great when that works. The rain came early, about 2:00, and I looked outside and went, oh my goodness, I can't believe this is happening. And then it miraculously stopped raining and got much hotter and allowed the people to come. And I really think, looking, I don't know what the actual final numbers were, but it looked to me like there were more people than there were last year, the year before. So I think it was well-attended. And I've heard lots of positive feedback from the people that were there. So I just want to thank everybody. I know it's a lot of work. The people that come sometimes don't realize how much work there is behind the scenes, especially for the firefighters and those that were actually trying to feed people and those people who had booths. It was, it was a lot of work. So thanks for those of you that actually did that and crowd control, et cetera. It was, y'all did a great job. Thank you.
I think I saw somewhere where the fire auxiliary cooked close to 900 hot dogs. Is that what I read? Yeah, I was thinking, I heard about 700 that night when I was there. And then I read the report and it was nine, so hats off to the fire auxiliary. I see Jerry sitting there, just tremendous. And I do think you're right, the attendance was significantly higher.
That's because it was the fire chief's birthday.
Oh. Well, happy belated birthday. We didn't know or we would have had a.
Oh, if we had known.
900 people singing, happy birthday. Anything else this evening?
No, that was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I approach him?
Yeah, I also, I was at the national night out and it was really great. And I thanked Jerry and his crew for doing what they do, not just at that event, but others all the time. I understand they had to run up the food line. They bought all the hot dogs they had. So there might have been some upset visitors later that evening. I would like to mention, each month we get notified of different members of staff who people have recognized. And there are several this past month that I think bear some, you know, making it public. Ron Sideman sent a letter in about a pleasant experience he had with the water department. And he didn't remember the person's name, but when Debbie responded, she pointed out that it was Randy Hudgens. And they had a very, very good experience, good enough for them to let us know about it. And we have, one of our employees is kind of chronic at getting on this list, is Joseph Michael Wilson for Public Services Department. Two letters came in thanking the town for his services, one from Arlene Brinkley and one from Patrick Bays. And they both were very thankful for the kind of service. And not only those services, but other services they've been involved with in the town. I think it's kind of important we try to, we're told about it, but I think it's nice sometimes to let you all know about it too. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up on that. I had those two mentioned, so thank you for bringing that up. And also want to draw attention, hopefully you all saw the article in the My Outer Banks Home, the recent edition. It was talking about all the things that happen to care for our guests throughout the Outer Banks before they arrive. And they did a segment on our Public Works and Solid Waste Management. And specifically, Mike, who you already mentioned, as well as Lynn Lindsay. And just some really wonderful things. They interviewed some folks just about the service that they provide with our solid waste collection. People were talking about, you know, just looking forward to them coming by and waving in friendly faces and the hard work, the hours that they put in, starting their day at 4:30 in the morning and the tonnage that they pick up with a friendly face. So anyway, kudos to them for the exceptional service they provide. And also want to note Louis Davenport's retiring after 24 years of service. I think the staff are doing a little potluck celebration Tuesday, or Wednesday. But that's, again, great service and wish well and during retirement. Two other things, the, I know we've been aggressively kind of advocating against the sales tax redistribution. And if you haven't followed the latest, I guess it was late last week, there started to be some negotiations on the Senate. The Senate looks to, or is going to pull out the sales tax redistribution language from the budget, from their version of the budget, or they're willing to do that through the negotiations, and separate it into a separate bill. They're looking at, they've modified now the plan, Senator Brown's plan now is a 50-50 sales tax redistribution instead of what was going to be an 80-20. So while that's a step, so to speak, in the right direction, it still is a significant impact to Dare County and to Kill Devil Hills, a negative, significant negative tax revenue loss for us. So I hope that this will just be the start of negotiations and not where it ends. I still stand resolute that there needs to be a new revenue source because just shifting around the taxes, you're going to have folks that lose and folks that may win. But what it does to the potential for us to be able to keep the level of services that we have, it puts that in jeopardy. And of course, we will only be a thriving tourist destination if we can provide those services at a very high level. Otherwise, people have plenty of choices and may take their business elsewhere. We certainly know that tourism is a very competitive field as well. So anyway, we encourage those listening and you guys too, and on the town to continue to advocate against the changing the sales tax distribution formula and really advocate for looking at new revenue sources to do that. We, I had an email from someone, and this, we might, if you would like to talk about it more, then I would suggest maybe we add it to a future agenda. But I'll just throw out what the request was and you can say, yes, we want to talk about it or no, we don't. But it's to look at adding a portageon, portageon somewhere along Bay Drive. The request came from, they're running or lots of exercising activity and now more and more people are using the multi-use path. If there is a place to have maybe as inconspicuous as possible of a portageon for those folks that are midway through their workout and are in the middle of Bay Drive and they may not have a residence anywhere near there. So I don't know if that's something that you all are interested in looking at. I certainly shared that I would bring this up for discussion.
Yeah, that sounds fine. Yeah, I mean, and I wouldn't mind seeing it part of, I mean, we've talked about having them added to some of the other beach accesses, so just a general discussion on where we go with, you know.
Portageons, okay.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay.
So add it as an agenda?
Mm-hmm. Would it be possible, and you can let us know what meeting would be the most appropriate. But I would, I would like staff's recommendations if we're looking at, I mean, if we're looking at Bay Drive, where may be the best place possible. So if staff could look at that and bring that back for our discussion. The other part of that discussion is beach accesses. So the location isn't as much in question as just the finance picture, the budget impact.
Right, with the, the Bay Drive would be soon or the beach accesses would be for the next year.
For the next season, right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And then the last thing I want to share, I was invited to attend, it's called Rising Tides 2015. It's a national summit on unprecedented coastal flooding. And it's led by a senator from New Hampshire and the mayor of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. They're calling this summit together, they're gathering representatives from, one to two representatives per state for up and down the East Coast. Any state that's, I guess, around the panhandle as well, that's impacted by coastal flooding. I really don't know how I was contacted, but I was. They cover all of the expenses. It's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday summit. It starts at 6:30 at night on a Friday and goes till 12:30 on Sunday. They're going to have lots of media opportunities. They're going to have professional film crews there if we want to film. Any of the elected officials that are there want to film a video segment or a soundbite for their town or community on what challenges they're facing. They also want to work with staff before any of the representatives go if we want to get any information out to our local media outlets. And so anyway, the conference or the summit is October 23rd through the 25th. They chose New Hampshire. One, it also marks the two or three-year anniversary of Sandy, Sandy that did all of the flooding, yeah, up north. So that's, that was my first question, is why New Hampshire? But also, they have the representatives that have pulled together to try to host this and the mayor that's hosting this there. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to share what issues we're facing. I've had two conference calls with the planning committee. I also have shared all of our beach nourishment videos that we've produced here, the ones with Bill Pitt and then the ones with other community stakeholders. They were very impressed with the messaging that we're doing. So it's a combination of trying to come together and with all of these different coastal communities, it's an educational opportunity for us to learn about what different communities are facing, but then trying to pull together a, almost kind of a synergistic media message that we can all share and then providing extra platforms for media exposure. So I think it's going to be a neat opportunity for us. So I will share this information that I received via email and a survey that I had to complete and update you more later. But when they said they would cover everything from travel to hotels, so it's not costing the town anything for just me to go. Anyway, I'm happy to represent our area. So I will send that information to the town, to the staff and you guys. And Mary, if it's okay, provide your name, is the contact for the media information? Wonderful, okay, thank you. Okay, that's all I have this evening. Town manager's agenda? Town attorney's agenda?
Don't have anything for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. On the consent agenda this evening, have the minutes from the July 13th, 2015 meeting. As was alluded to earlier, when the public hearings for September were set, the board by consensus has changed the September meeting from the 14th to Monday, September the 21st. The third item is the American Engineering Associates Proposal for Design and Bidding of the US 158 sidewalks, West Third Street to the KDH Fire Station. We did recently receive the confirmation of the grant award in the amount of $80,250 from the Visitors Bureau to continue this. And this is the engineering contract and the amount of $23,000 for the design and the bidding. Approval of consent agenda will record the board's approval of this agreement and any necessary budget amendments. Number four is cab companies. Apex Cab Company is now Captain's Cab Company and requests for approval of application for certificate of taxi cab operation for Beach Cab Company and Bayside Cab Company. These two cab companies have been operating, been submitted by Keith Stone. Both Beach and Bayside have been in operation previously. The police department conducted the appropriate investigation on Mr. Stone's application and finds no background issues relevant to denial. Approval of this consent agenda would approve the board's, their certificate request. And staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please sign or no sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the time we've set aside to have a joint work session with the planning board. Thank you very much, planning board members, for being here this evening. This is to kind of explore, have an exploratory conversation together between the two boards on large, single-family dwellings. And staff have prepared a PowerPoint to provide an overview, to give us a foundation of what it is that we're looking at, because this is a pretty big topic. It was, Travis and I had the opportunity a couple of months ago to sit down with staff. And I think it was at that time that we realized, wow, you know, this is pretty all-encompassing. There's a lot of variables that we need to consider when discussing this. And we thought the best way would be to start our discussion by having this introductory PowerPoint that I think Brian is going to present for us. And I think just from staying in your seats, staying comfortable in those seats, Brian will present. And then after the PowerPoint, if you don't mind, we'll all gather around the table just for the conversation, if everyone's agreeable. Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, I'm going to give a short presentation on large, single-family dwellings within the town of Kill Devil Hills. Just wanted to start by reminding everybody that the town of Kill Devil Hills has no direct restrictions on the size or number of bedrooms for single-family and duplex dwellings within the town. However, our neighbors of Currytuck, Duck, Southern Chores, Nagshead, However, our neighbors of Currytuck, Duck, Southern Shores, Nagseth, and Dare County do have something on the books that somehow restricts the size of the building, the number of bedrooms, or the occupancy. Um, something that we should talk about first is ratified Senate Bill twenty-five, which is an act to clarify what a county or municipality may enact zoning ordinances related to design and aesthetic controls. This bill says a lot of things about what a municipality can and can't control, but the most important thing about what we're talking about is the number or types of rooms. So, all ordinances that other towns have on the books that say no more than eight bedrooms, they're gonna have to revise those ordinances. Um, it's important, important to point out that it does not include regulating height, bulk, orientation, or location of structures on lots. The next few slides, I'm gonna go through each one of those towns and counties and tell you exactly what their ordinances are that they have on the books and for the ones that I've talked to, how they're proposing to change those ordinances. Currytuck County, specifically the Outer Banks area, they don't regulate the size of the structure or number of bedrooms or wastewater, but they do regulate floor area ratio, lot coverage, and lot size. Um, the floor area ratio ranges from a maximum of point four to point five, depending on what zoning district you're in. Lot coverage of a maximum of thirty percent to sixty-five percent, also depending on what zoning district you're in. And for the four-by-four areas, a minimum lot size of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. However, there are some developments that were previously approved and planned unit developments that are being developed under transitional standards, meaning they were approved with different numbers of bedrooms and um, sizes of the buildings that these specific regulations that they have on the books now do not apply to. Um, the town of Duck has a tiered approach based on lot square footage and number of bedrooms. In September, their council will review two proposals. The first one is a maximum building size and the second one is an occupancy. Um, so I'll go through each one of these tiers with you. Um, lots with a square footage of nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet or less currently have a maximum of four bedrooms. Their proposal is either a maximum of four thousand square feet or ten occupants. For lots between ten thousand square feet and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine, current regulations are a maximum of five bedrooms and their proposals are either a forty-five hundred square foot building maximum or twelve occupants. Lots between fifteen thousand and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine currently have a six-bedroom maximum. They're proposing either a five thousand square foot building size or fourteen occupants. Lots between twenty thousand square feet and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine currently have a maximum of seven bedrooms. Um, their proposal is fifty-five hundred square feet or sixteen occupants. And for lots greater than twenty-five thousand square feet, current regulations limit it to a maximum of eight bedrooms. They're proposing a six thousand square foot building maximum or a maximum occupant of eighteen. Next is the town of Southern Shores. Their current rules um, limits in the RS-one, RS-eight, RS-ten, and R-one zoning districts to a maximum of seven bedrooms and/or an occupancy of fourteen. Um, in their commercial zoning district, they allow more than seven bedrooms. They have talked to their town attorney and they're going to leave this ordinance as is with a maximum of fourteen occupants. The town of Nagseth also has a tiered approach based on lot square footage. Currently, they have um, for lots less than sixteen thousand square feet, a maximum of five bedrooms or thirty-five hundred square feet. Um, for lots greater than sixteen thousand square feet, they have a maximum of eight bedrooms or five thousand square feet. Um, they're working on adopting an intermediate ordinance that would limit building size to thirty-five hundred square feet until they determine exactly how they wanna regulate this. Finally, Dare County does it a little differently. Um, they regulate the number of bedrooms and wastewater capacity. However, they do not regulate the actual square footage of the building itself. Um, and the next slide is exactly how they regulate that. For lots with a square footage of nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet or less, it's a maximum of four bedrooms or a wastewater equivalent of four hundred and eighty gallons per day. And that's the standard hundred and twenty gallons per day per bedroom. Um, for lots between ten thousand square feet and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet is a maximum of five bedrooms or six hundred gallons per day. And for lots greater than fifteen thousand square feet, it's six bedrooms or seven hundred and twenty gallons per day. But for every additional twenty-five hundred square feet of lot area, they can have one additional bedroom or a hundred and twenty gallons per day of wastewater capacity. So that's how our neighbors regulate building size and number of bedrooms. I'm gonna give you an example, or actually lots of examples, of large structures that have been constructed in the town of Kill double Hills in the past three years. First, we have nineteen oh five, South Virginia Dare Trail, fifteen bedrooms, square footage of ten thousand sixty-seven, and a floor area ratio of point four-five. Nine eleven, South Virginia Dare Trail also has fifteen bedrooms with a square footage of almost eight thousand and a floor area ratio of point three-three. Two thousand one, South Virginia Dare Trail has twelve bedrooms and almost nine thousand square feet with a floor area ratio of point four-seven. Next, at five oh three, South Virginia Dare Trail is our biggest house by square footage at thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two square feet with twenty-two bedrooms and a floor area ratio of point five. Nineteen oh three, South Virginia Dare Trail has sixteen bedrooms, ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven square feet and a floor area ratio of point four-seven. Next door at nineteen oh one has fourteen bedrooms, ninety-five hundred square feet and a floor area ratio of point four-five. More of the same. Seven oh three, South Virginia Dare Trail has twelve bedrooms, almost sixty-two hundred square feet and a low floor area ratio of point two-four. Eighteen thirteen has fourteen bedrooms, ten thousand, seven hundred and nineteen square feet and a floor area ratio of point five. Seven oh one, South Virginia Dare Trail has sixteen bedrooms in the main house and a two-bedroom pool house for a combined square footage of almost eighty-seven hundred square feet with a floor area ratio of point three-four. Next, under construction, the Ocean Manor by Saga at eleven eleven, North Virginia Dare Trail has our most bedrooms with twenty-four with a finished square footage proposed at eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four square feet and a floor area ratio of point three-one. Also, last week, we permitted two sixteen-bedroom houses at sixteen twenty-nine and sixteen thirty-one, North Virginia Dare Trail, each proposing to have eight thousand, twenty-two square feet. The next slide is a summary of all the information I just gave you with lowest, highest, and average number of bedrooms, floor area ratio, square footage, and value per square foot of assessed value as determined by Dare County. That's the end of my presentation. Gave you a overview of what the world is around us and what we have in town. And the next few slides have some talking points that I think Sheila wanted to use to facilitate your discussion, but I'll stay here if anybody has any questions for the remainder.
Um, how about this, let's um, if everybody, planning board and board commissioners will join around the table and then, Brian, you don't necessarily have to stay there. You can just go to a mic if we're gonna ask you questions. How about that?
All right, again, thanks everybody for getting together. Um, and Brian, thanks for the presentation. The reason I thought that would be important to share is because you can't just jump right in and say, okay, let's look at far. Or let's look at, well, we can't look at bedrooms anymore, or you can't even necessarily say, look at square footage. Because if you, if you saw the different houses that were put up there, I mean, what you may think by the number of bedrooms is a really large house, it may not be when you look at the floor area ratio, so. But I think before we get into um, really any of the, the nuts and bolts of this, is I wanna take back, take a step back and say, well, what's the purpose of even looking at this? Um, I know this came up some in discussion, or at least I believe it did, at the Community Appearance Committee. And then it came up when we were looking at multi-um, family dwellings and when we were looking at that. So I think we should probably try to come to some type of consensus of why we wanna look at this. Because that may guide specifically what we want to look at. So we put just a few questions together to think about, you know, what really is our issue? Why, let's define the issue so we know what, what we're working towards, what, what we wanna try to accomplish. Um, so is the issue the fact of the aesthetics, you know, looking at large structures on skinny lots? Or is it, you know, the overall just size? Is it that it's not the beach look? Is it the architectural design? Um, so that's one consideration. Um. Yeah, you can just move to the, to the next slide if you want. Um, as far as just other questions, um, so is it appearance? Is it truly size? Is it truly number of people? Um, you know, any other variable of why we wanna discuss this, that then may guide what we wanna do about it. So I'll pause there and see what you guys, thoughts, guys and y'all have about, you know, what would we want to look at and what's the reason, uh, what do we wanna address?
How did it get on the agenda?
Um, it got on our agenda, um, yeah, you brought it up when we were discussing the.
FARA on multi-family.
Right.
Oh, right.
It originally came up, the FARA multi-family came up at the Community Appearance Committee. And it, that's what we, I guess, fo- focused and started when we were looking at the FARA, the, for those of the multi-family. And said we would revisit this later. So I think it originally maybe started, um, a little bit of discussion at Community Appearance for this specifically, um, when we were looking at FARA number, Coach Appleton, but let's look at this.
Yeah, and I had gotten comments and questions on, is the possibility of FARA discussion including single-family? And, you know, some more blunt than that, what are we doing with the big houses? They're complex everywhere. Um, then when Sheila and I met the, um, the town, the staff, the tax implications were brought to our attention. So there's definitely a broader view being portrayed in this presentation than what I had originally brought up, um, to have on the agenda. Um, and the other piece that I'm not sure, I haven't gone through this version of the presentation is that I, my concern is with parking and how you truly park. And the cars for twenty-two or twenty-four bedrooms, you know, at least one car per, would be a rough estimate, so. Where do you put all those cars? And then the discussion with stacked parking versus non-stacked. A little more background.
The, the issue is getting, has been started, I mean, years ago, I guess, but it's really snowballing now. This is gonna get into, we've been talking about some, but, you know, being with the home builders and all, I've been talking to Nagseth all, all this deal they've been doing. And they, I personally like their incentive program and most of the home builders like the way the direction Nagseth took. I like the way Nagseth looks and I've even brought it up in some of our committees here about what we can do to go in that direction. Because they definitely, they created a look and I, I think it's benefiting their town as a whole. Um, you know, it'd be tough to put in a box now beside the other houses that look so nice because you've gotta compete financially with them. And we're getting into much bigger homes here, but it's gonna get into, okay, and statewide even, they're trying to figure out what's a large vacation home. And they're hesitant, the home builders are hesitant because if you start with twelve bedrooms, then it's gonna go to ten, then it's gonna go to eight or whatever. But, you know, you're gonna get into code issues as far as, okay, well, it's a twenty-some bedroom, it probably needs sprinkles system. But it, it become commercial in the point that you've gotta put in handicap ramps and handicap accessible bathrooms and so it's a really, it's a pretty convoluted issue that's gonna take a lot of thought. And we definitely need to start looking at it quickly and confidently.
Yeah, I, I agree that it's definitely time to start talking about it. To be perfectly honest, I'm kinda surprised that these FARS are as low as they are. I mean, the houses look massive. And when you've got eight, does, does everybody have SUVs except me? I mean, every vacationer brings an SUV, I think, but, you know, and they've got them parked out in front there. But I, I think it's the mass of the building and the height of the building. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm surprised that the FARS are as low as they are. Um, but of course, with the new state law, we can't tell them to do the Kill double hills style or anything. We can't tell them what to make it look like anymore. But I think that, um, trying to make it fit better, and I don't know exactly what that's gonna take, but so many of them just look out of place. They kinda look like big fat thumbs that I've hit with a hammer. But there are more and more of them, so it's beginning to look like that's the norm.
That's what people are renting on.
I know.
The driver, the truck.
Exactly.
Nagseth's always had a point incentive where if you did, you know, dormers and covered courses and all this, then you could, then you could get to that point. And really, did this kinda change in the wording? Right now, I thought you had a little bit of a knee-jerk reaction. They said, okay, we're gonna moratorium till we figure it out because of what the state law now says. We were like, hey, you know.
Won't stop all business.
Yeah, we finally made a research, you know, the realtors, the home builders, which, you know, the average home construction, it's like seventy-eight people on average are associated with the construction of one home. Some more, some less, but that's the average. So now, well, the discussion is now, then you said, okay, we'll drop it to thirty-five hundred until we figure it out. And our point was, well, you know, not only affecting us and most things that they're gonna start for next year are gonna start this fall already. So most of them have already been designed and you can't plan and design and prune a home in two months anyway. And not only that, but if you got somebody's purchased a lot with the idea they can build a five thousand square foot house, which is, is big, but not big compared to what we're building in Kill. On both sides of them, there's five thousand square foot houses. Now all of a sudden, they can't. You just reduce their lot cover, I mean, they're just giving their, their, um.
Ru- reduce the value.
The value, yeah, probably twenty percent or something. I said, you might have some pretty serious repercussions. And we've already had people calling, you know, flipping out, going, hey, you know, I, I wanna, you know, if they build a five thousand square foot, I wanna build it. So, but I think this being worked out, and believe it or not, it's gonna end up being, at least temporarily, I believe, okay, you can build thirty-five hundred square foot and somehow, if you do this, this, and this, we'll let you go back to five thousand. So it's, we're, we're trying to achieve basically the same thing that they had before, just in a different direction, I think. But they, I will say Nagseth has been extremely, they were very, um, we, we met the planning board, we met the town manager, mayor, and town planner on separate occasions. And then we had another meeting with the whole town recently and they've been, they were very, um, they listened and they thought about what we were saying and they realized that, yes, you know, we had some points in there, so it's, we're trying to work with them. It's worked out pretty well so far, so I will say there's been a great deal of cooperation, which is nice. And that's only on a five thousand square foot house. So now we're talking, you know, double that, ten thousand, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand worth of going. You know, I'm sure that the fire department is concerned about sprinkles in these big homes and all that, but and from a builder's standpoint, I think you're gonna need sprinkles in a house and, you know, you can sleep thirty people or whatever, you know, so. But it's not so much that, you know, if you're not gonna advertise it's handicap accessible, then you shouldn't have to put, you know, massive ramps and it's just gonna, you talk about lot coverage, it'll really get crazy then. But, but there's some issues that we can discuss and some of it is, where do we wanna go with Kill double Hills? I mean, most of those houses we look at, look nice from the front.
Mm-hmm.
And if you walk down the side, that would look a little different.
Well, and you bring up a great point on using Nagseth as the illustration of if you have two five thousand square foot homes, you make a regulation change that now you can only have a thirty-five hundred. We are, in, in looking at this, need to consider that too. You've got two eleven thousand square foot homes, we change it, not only is there a tax implication for us in revenue, but there's also for that lot value of the, the person that owns the one in the middle that hasn't yet built the, the large home, um, so we need to.
You know, that was my, I was gonna say, probably the same thing you're gonna say, which is, the biggest thing that triggered me when I looked at the presentation was that. But yeah, you might say, well, by the example, if we said you can build half as big a house, you'd get half as much tax revenue on you. That's new revenue, right? So it's easier to give up new revenue for, for benefit. The scary thing about it is that forty percent of our revenue is from the oceanfront and if you look at land values across that tax base, you know, those are not included in those numbers, like, you know, for, for a reason for this illustration, but underneath it, the economy of Kill double Hills as a town is highly dependent on the sand underneath and if. And if you tell all builders that all lots are gonna be able to have less built on them, they will value those, the marketplace will value those lots less. And the value over time of all of the lots will go down and the tax revenue that we're already getting is what's at the jeopardy. So, yeah, that's tread carefully material, but I'd like to say one more point before I talk too much. And that I think that the real key is, we're talking about the incentives. You can't limit the number of bedrooms and you can't say you have to have dormers or you have to have a better looking outline. But you can say very restrictive unless you do these things. And then that trade-off, I think, is the key to the way forward. And like you said, we have inspiration from NAGCIT. I'm sure the staff could dig up some other ideas that are also in that if-then trade scenario, which it looks very restrictive at first glance. But when you look at all the extra things that you can trade for, for a lot coverage or more, whatever it is, more FAR. We can get what we want, which is really an aesthetic, uh, thing that we're looking at. I think that's kinda where we're coming, is truly about the aesthetic. I don't think people really could have a problem with a twenty-four bedroom home. Maybe they do. Uh, there aren't a lot of spaces to do that again. And maybe there's something to be said for not allowing recombination of lots on the oceanfront. So the two or three lots can't be combined to more giant mansions if we're, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm just making assumptions. If we're anti-mansion, anti, you know, twenty-four bedroom home, then maybe that's something else to look at, something. These houses are very expensive, large houses. They're not just big boxes. Putting a lot of money into the whole house and architecture. Uh, I don't think you can say, I mean, it's bulk, that's what the point was about the, when we went over the FAR. The bulk of that one big, so kind of, and, and these houses do look bulky, you know, I mean, for the, even by the FAR ratio, I mean, they're on big lots.
I find it ironic, I mean, the, uh, I still haven't heard a lot of people are even looking at this. What's the reasoning behind it? His first, Brian's first statement in his PowerPoint presentation was that Killable Hills, which is our neighbors, we don't regulate the size of our homes, but that's not true. We've got old zoning ordinance, old planning department, but then who you talk to is either gonna help you or something. You know, there's, there's all kinds of regulations on the books on controlling the size and, uh, the density and setbacks at lot coverage. Cans, wastewater, uh, stormwater rules, there's piles of regulations telling you what we can do, uh, what they can or can't do. And I, I've yet to hear, I mean, I, I think we're on, personally, you know, we've gone from torn flags to this FAR thing on, on, uh, large condos. And now we're gonna regulate whether a package is wrapped or not in a storage area. I think we're going in a direction that's purely aesthetics, uh, which is, in my opinion, in a very thin spot to tell somebody what they can or can't do with their property. With regulations that are already in place. And then the business side of me, uh, is interested in your comment Travis, uh, which I know wasn't mentioned in here, but the financial impact of it. You know, and, you know, we're looking at, you've mentioned the potential for the redistribution of sales tax, um, you know, what's going on on the federal level. Um, money-wise and, uh, things aren't getting any cheaper. Uh, we've got pumping sand on the beach, some tax risings there. And I just can't help but look at it on a perspective that on, on one hand, we're telling folks, come here and spend your money because we need to stabilize our place, which tourism, tourism is our main staple here. But on the other side, it looks like we're trying to whack the, the oceanfront boats, um, which is our income stream. That part doesn't click with me. I mean, why in the world would we look at, and I don't know the facts on this, so just going by common sense, that if you. If they go to a smaller structure, it's gonna be less, uh, folks in there, but the value of the structure is gonna be less. And the bottom line is there's a less of an income stream back to the town. If you have that now, I don't understand why, you know, why would we try to make that income stream less? When all we're dealing with right now is, seems to be rising costs and higher taxes. I don't understand that. Hopefully this dialogue will come out where I do understand that, but I, I just don't.
Well, I think the whole purpose of this dialogue is to determine that, you know, put really your comments and tips together. It's just like, it, it is to blend that, I mean, these are, those are the challenges, but what is the vision we want? And if the vision is, let's focus just on the financial picture of it, then, then that's fine. But if we're trying to, if, if the desire is to try to find some type of compromise in the middle, if that's possible, then this is the place to start that discussion. Um, and that's truly, the purpose of tonight is just to explore, do we take this any further? Or if there's not a desire, this is where it ends for now. Maybe pick back up years from now, but, um, I think it, it grows to a level of, we need to talk about this. Because we're getting comments from those, we brought it up at, at one meeting, we're riding by, posting things on the social media about, oh my gosh, look at these monster mansions. Is this what we want in KDH? So the citizens are asking good questions and we owe it to them to have a discussion. So, but this is good, I mean, this is what we need, so. And to your point, Eddie, though, if you guys haven't looked at it, please do. The last two pages of your handout is what staff did to calculate what the potential tax impact could be. Um, and then I know you're talking about to new revenue, it doesn't factor in the potential of depreciation or not depreciation, but decrease in, in land value if putting on a change. But this is really, these are all the tough things that we have to factor in to have this discussion.
I, I totally agree. I mean, this, this is gonna fall in our lap one way or another, but at least be aware of what's going on and talking out about any dialogue is important. In one way, NAGCIT, they didn't realize at first inherently, um, controlled the size of the houses by their septic. Generally, they, I think they'd get twelve hundred square, twelve hundred gallons a house, which they wanted eight bedrooms max, but not. Basically, I think that was eight, seven bedrooms and maybe one that has bunk beds. So you've got twice as many people staying in that one bedroom, but it's basically, it's nine beds. So you're, you're kinda limited to the nine bedrooms there, just pile it away. So, yeah, exactly. And evidently, we won't have that issue here. But, and it's almost like it's our new Millionaire's Row or whatever you wanna call it on the issue. I'm not saying we need to limit it, I just think we need to start thinking about it and see where, where it's going. You know, I mean, I think we all have a vision of what we want Killable Hills to look like and. You know, saying, you know, I'm a, I'm a big property owners person. I mean, I believe if you bought this, that property, then you still do whatever you're, you can do within the, the rules and regulations of the town. Back to Lowe's, that's all we do. Somebody that wanted to build Lowe's, they should have bought the property and sat on it. That's all I can say, but, but I think it does warrant discussion.
I think you make a good point too, that, that we can look at the history of the last twenty years and try not to fall into some holes that we've fallen into before, which is. In the last go-go building boom, um, the discussion that everyone's looked for social media was all about, you know, what is a mansion and how many bedrooms? Is too many? Um, it's interesting that the state has intervened to say, well, you can't use bedrooms as a tool, right? So, but it was one way to look at their head around, what is, what is this all about? If you live in a three-bedroom house, you can't quite imagine what a giant vacation home is all about. But, uh, that said, I think the concern back then was because the highest investment use, in tru- in business terms, how people decide what to do with their lot. Had to do with, you know, what, what can make most money with this many square feet of a lot? And what happened when the value of sand rose so fast that those single-story motels all became, you know, untenable? Because the tax doubled, but the revenue didn't. Meanwhile, the giant house next door on similar amount of square footage was bringing in so much more revenue, it just paid to bulldoze those things. Usually not by the family that owned it for fifty years, but when they sold and the next person did. So we, as a community, grappled with, did we like our beat-up fifties motel? Did we want to save them somehow? Um, we were generally unsuccessful if that was what we were trying to do. Um, there was a lot of nostalgia every time one went down. Um, so there's that balance of, you wanna preserve the old, you wanna make way for the new. Um, but yeah, I think I've said in previous meetings that I, I have a little concern and sympathy for the oldest, smallest cottages. And the pressure that's put on them by the highest investment use on either side of it. We don't, we, I think most of us say, well, I wish there was some way without distorting the marketplace, that I could preserve that, that little house. When their tax bill goes to ten thousand dollars a year and they own three bedrooms, you know? You wanna have a three-bedroom house on a big lot, it's beautiful, but if you can't pay for it, uh, it goes away. Now, just a couple of examples and just to throw it out for discussion. You go to other tourism markets in Florida that are more mature, they've been around ten decades, several decades more than us. All sorts of interesting things were tried in the sixties and seventies with lots, lots of interesting results, some of them unintended consequences. Same in Colorado, in ski market towns, but it hasn't, that had more to do with preserving affordable housing for people to live in when everything was multimillion. Um, so in Florida, you've got situations in, in, uh, in the Daytona area where, back in the sixties, early seventies, they passed an ordinance that said. Because taxes were going up so fast, they went straight from little houses on the beach to fifty-story condos, right? Of course, if you have your house in an area that could be one-third of a fifty-story condo, you're, you're gonna get priced right out of there. So what they did was, was they passed something, I think it was called the Homestead Act or something, where they said, if you have a three-bedroom rancher on the oceanfront. Your taxes will not go up more than three percent per year. Sounded pretty good. So they went through decades of it going up by eight and ten percent next door. Now, they can't put an addition on their house because basically if they add a fourth bedroom, the fourth bedroom's at that next door rate, which is astronomical. Um, but what you end up with is giant fifty-story condo buildings next to beat-up ranchers that have not been upgraded since nineteen sixty-two. That doesn't look so hot either, but where, you know, how do, how do we navigate a similar situation in two thousand fifteen that they were facing in nineteen seventy-five? Um, uh, the other thing that happens, it's unintended about that, is because you've got dozens and dozens, I don't know, hundreds probably, of these little ranchers along the oceanfront. Interspersed with giant tall buildings, is all these guys are now not paying their share of the taxes, like inland taxes, all are much higher than they are here. People move from here, three-bedroom house, could, enough of three-bedroom house, their tactical is doubled. Of course, there are other taxes, maybe no taxes, kind of apples are interesting, but, um, I just wanna throw all those things out of there because you start feeling with these knobs. And I agree with feeling with them because I think that's all you have is to, to spend a little bit of a loss of potential, like, in order to get what you want. But if you turn the knob too hard, you're very likely to tip over the apple cart. So it's tread carefully, and the last thing was just, you know, that, like you said, if people are moratorium, that's sort of a desperate measure. And they did that with the moratorium, wanna eat better mouths, or whatever it was back in the day, in the eighties, nineties. Um, you just hiccup the whole construction industry, which is another big part of our economy. So it's better to say, plan it as much in advance as you can and say, well, we have some new ideas for rules, make sure you get stakeholders input. Let's say these things will happen a year from now, so that people that already own their land, already own the property can do what they thought they were gonna do when they bought it. Rather than really, you know, upset not only those property owners, but all of the people who are trying to service them and build a new house. All right, I've talked too long again. Sorry.
Well, I think back to the vision of KDH and, um, yeah, a couple of things you guys said. Um, not all families can afford to stay in one of these monster homes. And, and if, if we do decide that we don't wanna do anything and eventually that's all we have in KDH, we have changed.
To our customer.
Where our customers may go, because if they go to NAGCIT instead of KDH because they can't find anything on the oceanfront to afford in KDH anymore, unless they, you know, spend it, their vacation with eight other families. That they may not wanna do that, I don't know. So it's, it's just things that should factor in the discussion. Um, you know, I had a call recently, unfortunately, it was a complete call, um, about something that had checked into, uh, it was an oceanfront, a smaller home. There were some issues that the home wasn't upgraded, but it was, you know, I was amazed with the price, it was three thousand dollars for the week. But that family had saved up for the year, they were so excited to be able to be down here with just their family, it was a smaller oceanfront cottage here. And it made me think, you know, if we do go into all of, only, um, you know, if we have the environment that's gonna foster all of our oceanfront properties turning into monster-sized homes. That will go away eventually with maybe the next sale or something that could change, so just part of the discussion.
You know, I don't know enough about it, I'm not a builder. In the old days, some of my favorite little spots on the Outer Banks that I visited when people come to visit, you know, you, or when they rent, you go get to see it. Um, are these remaining cottage courts and, and things that are, um, multiple houses on the, on the east side of the, um, beach road. There's only a couple of them in town left. I guess that's, the way the lots are situated, that's not allowed now. But we have some pretty wide areas and it's those areas where you've got large square footage, but in a narrow strip, and you can look on the map and see how many there are. That if you really like the idea, I mean, if you wanna see a vision where we foster more small family opportunities as part of the market, um, maybe there's a way to allow that again? I don't know. I, I really don't know enough about it or how much that would disorient the market, but.
Well, this sorta came up when we were doing the FAR for the motels, you know? They, they, they serve, uh, definitely a, a tourist who can't afford to rent a big house. And, and, you know, they were talking about trying to preserve as many as we have left because they do handle that market. The people that don't wanna rent a big house with three other families so that they can afford the oceanfront. Um, but, you know, I mean, these are all very nice conversations we're having, but we really have no control. Over the tourists, how much money they have, where they're gonna stay, you know?
The irony of the, of the problem, the thing, was that they're less expensive for that.
Yeah, but, you know, but anyway, um, it, it, like Stan and Eddie said, you know, this is market-driven at this point. And this is, I mean, those houses aren't sitting empty. Because if they were, somebody'd be doing something about that. So, you know, it, it's a difficult situation to be in, I mean, um. Some of them just, you know, and, and we've talked about it, it's the bulk that bothers me.
There's one, there's one on the oceanfront that I noticed, it's, it's not completed yet, I ripped off Street and Kelly. Well, first, when they first cleared that lot and started putting, I said, I couldn't believe it was actually, you know, then I, I realized, yeah, it's a game with that, that's a high doo. But, yeah, there was a beach access and it was a real high doo and then there's.
I think it's historical house next door.
They're real old, I don't know if they're, unless you're part of that program. But I feel sorry, it was even an old house.
And that's, this really is, I'm not gonna talk about it, cause it's really. I'm not thinking I'm gonna do that.
Along the same vein, maybe this is why some of these old, with built this whole, at one point we were looking at, it was at the stockholders committee where we're looking at motel heights and different things. And we also looked at ways that we could allow the older hotels and motels to revamp or maybe go up a floor so they could compete with the new hotels and whatnot. And there was never, you know, we had a big reaction, then at the end of it, everybody came in, we don't want hundred-foot hotels and all that stuff. But we were just trying to lift up a little bit, even say you just get service trucks under and put a decent roof. But we really looked at trying to have a way where these older hotels, motels could maybe add a floor or revamp them to, so they could, could, they could compete. And not have to sell out basically to the big homes that we've got now.
There's one for sale, Eddie.
If we had, if we had sorted out then, maybe we wouldn't be having quite this issue now, so it's another reason for discussing.
Question on, the one that's under construction, the twenty-four bedroom. What's, what's their parking situation?
Um, I think they actually have surplus parking, they're required to have twenty-four, ten-by-twenty spaces and turnaround, and I think they have close to thirty persons. by twenty spaces and turnaround, and I think they have close to thirty persons.
How many is up there?
It's a lot of seventy by two, which is...
Seven by three fifty?
Or...
Mike, did you want to hand up for a minute?
I was gonna say the thing about the less commutative ground, like you mentioned, and also the, the, these kinds of things have been hurting hotels for years, so they, there's hundreds of regulations that hotels have to conform to, help, pardon, say, these sprinklers, ADA regulations, any number of things, they have to rule that policy, and these eight, twenty plus bedroom homes, homes don't have to do that. And also the restaurants are killing the pinch on this too. Now, they may statistically, they might go up a percent or two revenue in here, but it's not necessarily relevant at a rate that might be able to sustain the business. And there's not, when's the last hotel besides the Hilton, built twenty-five years ago? And there's not a whole lot of new restaurants, the restaurants change again, and maybe being outdated at some point, you're not, there's not a lot of new restaurants. So one thing, if you benefit the property owner by trying to hold the value on his property, then if you accomplish that, then it continues to have an effect on other things, not just the two that I mentioned, but there's pressure on the services and all kinds of things.
For me, I think we kind of need to take a step, I look really at the big picture, and I've said this before when we dealt with other things too, it's, there's a fine line that at some point we're gonna reach where we change the whole atmosphere or we change everything, and people come here for a reason. They, they pass all those, all the other beaches and all the other vacation resort areas that they can come to, to be here, because we have something we need, and we have something that nobody else has, and that's why they travel so far to get here. And so far, we've not crossed that line to get there. And, and we've got a bunch of municipalities, so I think part of that's one of the reasons we've not done that, because we do have a mix of, of areas and, and different look houses to be able to do what we do, but that's, that's my fear, is that at some point we're gonna tip that scale and people are gonna go, that's just not what it, what I, where I want to go or what I want to do, and then, and then we're gonna be sunk, because it's gonna be really hard to undo what we've done. And, and so we, that's, that's where we need, as stakeholders, we need to kind of look at, what is it that we can do to make people want to keep coming here? And, and it's not, it's not that, it's not that we're anti-development or anti-anything, it's that we're pro, pro-tourists and pro, pro people coming here, and we need to keep that thought process of how is it that we can keep them coming here? And, and predominantly, folks don't like the, if you, if you ask them, they say they don't like the big houses, that's, at least that's what I've heard. Now, do they rent them? Yes, of course, if they can afford them, but, but a lot of people can't afford that, they do need the, the ability to do the others. So how do we fix that? That's, that's the big question. I, I like the incentive law process, if there's a way we could work that in to make it, but, but I, I don't know that that's gonna make it any more affordable for folks, but I don't know. I, that's, that's, that's where I stand with this, it's just, it's that, I don't, I don't want to teeter over that edge where we lose our uniqueness and folks to go, that's just another place to go.
Well, that hadn't happened this summer.
Well, and I think that we've maintained some of our uniqueness, I mean, this is so different than it was when, you know, I lived here, when I vacationed here before I moved here. But, you know, people are gonna come back because they have a good time. And people say they, people, you say people say they don't like the big houses, when you're talking about tourists or locals?
Mostly locals is what I hear.
Well, yeah, locals don't like it because it's not the old beach, and we're missing the, the motels and the little houses and all that kind of stuff, but tourists like them. And I'm sorry, but I think most of us today in America are spoiled, and most people don't want to rent the cute little house with one bathroom and three bedrooms because they're used to everybody having their own bathroom at home. They're not gonna do with less on vacation.
And people like them, if people are important.
Exactly, but that's why they come with other families, you know? One suggestion that I do want to put out to you all on kind of same issue, but a different one, is the historical landmark commission. I was on that for a while and Saga King and had bought all these lots, and there was a historical landmark house there, and the historical commission is absolutely toothless when it comes to protecting one of those historical homes. I mean, we, we couldn't do anything, and the only penalty is money. Well, the builders can afford, or the people that own the, the new property can afford to pay the back taxes and everything on that historical building. You know, and the state gave us all kinds of ideas, well, you can sell it and have them move it, and Saga was even willing to pay to have it moved if somebody would, blah, 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 but my point is...
Paying permits.
We need, yeah, but I think that thinking about these old homes, we, we need to be better prepared to do something to save the homes when these things happen, because it's gonna happen again. It might have already happened again.
I think that house didn't, the other didn't want to be part of that, didn't, was that the case? So it was their house, if they don't want to consider it historical, want to sell it?
Oh, no, this one, no, this was one where the guy had asked for the house.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was already a historical landmark, and, no, that was a different one.
I think if you, I think we have to be careful here, is that, too, we have to be careful that we're not looking at one thing, that is to protect the value of our property, it's not our job.
Right.
And there was, you said here at a meeting with another board ages ago, that our responsibility is to make sure businesses succeed, and that's not our responsibility, any more than it's so that we can make sure that somebody owns the property, that it maintains its value, that's not our job. We have a lot of other responsibilities for the people that are here. If we go at it that way and say, well, if we do this, they're locked in worthless, then we're missing a lot of the other points we need to take.
One of those big philosophical things that I love to bring up and, later back in, because it's kind of strange from our point here, but, but I think philosophy as a town, that we really need to look outward at other towns and other places, other locales across the country that are doing things that we like and try to emulate that. I've worked, I've been fortunate enough to travel over the last few years, and, and I love picking up playing board books from other towns. It's fascinating to see how other towns on their, on their show. Snowshoe, I give this example, Snowshoe, Steamboat Colorado, their, their code book is like this, they require all big box retailers to provide affordable housing at a certain rate based on numbers, you know, for every employee they expect to have. They can't just build a big box, they have to build a big box and have housing at a certain rate, so they, because they have, you know, a real big problem with it, all the land is millions and millions of dollars, and they don't have people to work those jobs, and it's a big problem, so they've, they've found new ways to, to make it work for them. I think we're heading to that world, and we need to think in that twenty, forty year timeframe, what are we gonna do when they're, when all of the property behind, from this side of the bypass, doubles in value, which is invaluable, because that's what happened in New Jersey fifty years ago, it's, Florida thirty years ago, it happened in Colorado in over the last twenty-five, thirty years, there's plenty of cautionary tales, but also inspiring stories on how to do it right, that we can look to and craft a future that we want. And when it comes to protecting historical things, and let everyone get off of that, you know, you look at places like the, the world really far out there, western ski towns in Colorado, they worry about losing their ranchland to, and so what they've done is through taxes and through private fundraising, they put together piles of money to buy ranchland when it comes up and preserve it forever, and they have lots of incentives to do that, that, you know, they pull every lever in the book, taxes, donations, plant, these all sorts of things, but the government steps in and makes it, pushes the, pushes the economic lever in the other direction to incentivize wealthy landlords to not sell to the market but to preserve. We, we don't do any of that stuff yet, but we can aspire and run on to do that.
I don't think that this county, the local bills can buy it.
Any example of that?
No, no, not the rest of the, what I mean though is that, is that shifting a little bit to say, we have a huge, huge tax base and a very low tax rate. People like to talk about more taxes, and obviously you've had to do that recently for the sand, but if you, if you realize that we make it through this year and the sky does not fall, and we've got a nice tax hike, and, and everybody swallowed hard and made it happen, you realize, boy, that was a lot of money for that tax hike, if we shift just a little, we could say, what would you do with that money if you had more money? And they would get more people on board.
An example, what you're saying is something that hypothetically could have been done here with the Rose City, if it's not gonna step in and say, well, we're gonna buy that mega park, and that's what we were talking about, what was happening in other places. If they feel strongly enough that there's something worth preserving, they're gonna step up and maybe get somebody else to invest, like you said, in nature concerns, and somebody in partnership.
Get other partnerships.
And buy that acreage where those is now and say, okay, now we protected that.
And the same thing goes for, there's certain stretches in Kellogg, I mean, we used to be very proud of, was it nineteen beach accesses? But there are stretches where you gotta go a half mile and you can't get to the beach. We've been really fortunate that it's very safe area so far, and people haven't built giant fences around all that oceanfront property. That's what happened in other communities, you drive down to A1A, you go miles and miles and all you see is gates. You're not even gonna drive, you just see a gate. Heaven forbid that is our future, but we, if you have the opportunity to, you know, have the money to be able to buy one of those lots once in a while in those areas that are half mile between another beach access, I think everybody in the town that lives here would be behind that, they would think that was a good use of their money. And if you had to tax the oceanfront a little bit more, I don't think anybody would lose sleep over it, you know, if it was something you got to...
I'm a senior on things being come, don't talk more money to me.
On the oceanfront, where nobody wins, it's all business.
Stuff come out when it's a...
One thing to consider is this new law that's, that's been passed. We were talking about how all the other towns have to modify their regulations, nothing we have to do anyway.
And the only ones that do are, well, because they've all had something, they're limited to bedrooms or, right, and that's what getting, we don't, right, we currently don't limit by bedrooms and we don't have the architectural limitations.
But what do the builders say about that? Is, is that gonna drive more business to these other towns where it was restrictive and now took it up, or how is it gonna shift the marketplace? How's the law gonna shift the marketplace? I don't really have my head around that.
It sounds like they're just, they're changing the way they're going to do it.
They're not gonna be restrictive, but it's just not gonna say better.
They're gonna define it differently, but still try to keep it within the same framework, is what it sounded like from, yes, from. But, you know, when we were looking at beach driving, beach driving, just recently, we made some changes. At the time we started looking at beach driving, we didn't have any regulations, I mean, we have the time, but there's no permitting for, for beach driving, I said regulations. And we first had a request to eliminate it. Well, we weren't even gonna consider doing that, because you can't go from being not restrictive to being the most restrictive, that just makes sense, even though one of our neighbors says this. So we ended up reaching a compromise, which, you know, we actually have not heard any, I just haven't heard any grief, that doesn't mean everybody loves it, but, you know, there's been standing room only meetings in the past in Kellogg's when they were talking about beach driving because people were so upset about what, what was happening, whereas what we did by coming together with NACSED honoring their permit or their, honoring our permit, adopting the same fee, so there's not a different fee, it was kind of, I think when I had been out to different river clubs and lines clubs presenting this, they were nodding their head, it's common, it makes good sense. And maybe it's a little Pollyanna, but I feel like that's kind of if we're looking at something in approach here, is I wouldn't be in favor of doing something radical, but if you look at right now, our square footage, the lowest of these big homes that they were looking at is around eight thousand square feet, the largest is just under twelve thousand. I think what's really tipped the discussion recently, in my opinion, has been what we've been hearing from, from the, the last few homes that went up. Those are what really, I think, prompted, at least bringing it to our attention of trying to have a discussion about it, because they're, they were just starting to get so, so massive, so to speak. So maybe there's a way to protect some of what we have, but still realize that these are valuable assets on our oceanfront, these, these large things, and they are attractive to, to folks. Fortunately, they're doing, they're, they're doing them very nicely as far as the construction. Maybe there's some type of compromise where we're protecting ourselves from getting too many of the ones that just seem so massive, but the ones, you know, the majority of the ones that we're looking here, are just looked at as nice assets in the town of Kellogg's, that give people the option to, they're an option. So I don't, I don't think we have to look at this, this is gonna just totally change the landscape that we have, it's more of maybe protecting so it doesn't get too out of control moving forward.
I think, I think it was Ben that said something about looking forward decades, not just, and then year after, and it would be nice, it'd be difficult to put together some sort of a long range plan, try to keep a little bit of everything somehow, and using whatever tools we, we have, or we can forget, so to speak. There's, what happens if these, these aren't popular anymore? I mean, there's, I read somewhere where there's four thousand big box, big box stores in the country, and, and empty, windows broken, and they were a great idea when they put them up, but they weren't big enough, so they built one over a little bit, made it bigger. I mean, I'd have to draft an example, but, you know, there was a time when people wouldn't be able to afford that, one of these homes. Now they can, maybe there'll be a time when either they don't want to, don't want it, or they don't want to, or they can't afford it.
They're done with smaller houses, yeah. You never know, you only have someone to show you.
But I'll tell you, you know, my father-in-law's, he was off with ten and a half in NACSED, where Saga just built the houses on a nice stretch. Those houses were rented the day they were done. People were showing up, and people were driving away, the remnants of the furniture, and, I mean, they're, it's amazing, they have been built every few seasons. So I mean, ten or fifteen years, that house may have served its purpose, and it's less, less to do something else with it than to maintain.
Yeah, I think if you look at, what I've already, particularly you guys in the construction business, is that you look at Duck and Corral, which have a jump on the big houses by five or ten years, but there's been a big boom of tear down rebuilds, particularly in Duck that I've heard of, where the five thousand square foot became deep, any place that wasn't already at the limits, it can be at the limits. I think we've already been, I mean, there's fifteen years at least where most peo, I mean, I think if you look at all those examples that were in the PowerPoint, how many of them had any wiggle room on the other bulk regulating things that you mentioned, you know, setbacks, and, you know, could they have built any bigger, or, or was that the FAR that the other rules of that site really limited to, they were already building at the maximum that the lot would allow, right? Or, or some of them had extra wiggle room?
I would say probably half of them had.
I know some of them, I could tell, that anyone's like point two five, they were choosing to build something less than what was legally allowed, just hey, that's individual making the decision that's not highest and best use, it's what they want, right? So, so how human nature?
Against dangerous, but too close to the limits. Which gets dangerous for the two most of the ones.
Yeah.
I mean, it takes a lot of time and effort to get right up to that.
It's possible a little more to go all the way up.
I haven't built those sized ones, but I've built some fairly big ones and typically I've got 15 square foot lot covers level, got one end to the roof and one end to the floor. I mean, they're, they're getting them pretty close. Once again, they were maybe five to eight if they weren't.
But that's just to agree over here, the 20s. The limits that are already, yeah, I think.
Another thing to keep in mind is that between us and banks, that the size of our lots on the water are significant enough. So that's why they don't necessarily look at being, but, you know, it's, it's a hard home, but they are large lots, they're, they're.
I see. They're not walk, I mean, they're not always what. Front always looks good, the back always looks good. Say you walk down the side, or if you got a house next door, it's a compass from one side, that one.
You're soon not allowed.
You're not seeing anything except for, you got tunnel vision right there.
So, really, where we get from here is, do we want the Board of Commissioners to add this to an agenda item to be able to come up with some guidance to give staff and then send to the planning board to continue this? And that's really where we're going to be. And if we are, are we, this is really just an oceanfront impact or is, you know, or is this, is our guidance going to need to be broader than that? And then are we looking at, so we can't, not looking at bedrooms, are you looking at square footage? Are you looking at floor area ratio? It's really what we need to determine, but not determine any specifics, we just need to determine, do we want the board to be able to met this in upcoming meeting and then with the goal, because there's no need for us to discuss it if it's going to come, nobody really wants it discussed any further, but are we going to do that and be able to come up with some guidance to give staff some direction to work with the planning board, take someone to the planning board? Because I don't want to set any board up, whether it's the Board of Commissioners or the planning board, to just sit and have months and months of the same conversation. So we need to be able to give staff some direction to then bring something for discussion versus.
It was time to pick up and done tonight and talk to the folks and staff. Or if you think you're ready to.
Does it make a huge, and we've talked about the value, the land value, depending on, you know, if we were telling some builder that, you know, you can only put a house on there this size because of occupants, you know, some of the towns are saying occupants. Does it make a big, huge, giant difference if, if somebody is allowed to build a house that they can only have 30 occupants as opposed to a house they can have 48 occupants? Does that suddenly make your land value lower, significantly lower? I mean, is that a, is that a big, huge deal? I mean, is that, that, is that a big problem?
The more occupants, the more land.
No, no, I know that, but I'm just saying that, you know, suddenly we're, you know, oh, we're going to hurt these people's land value. You know, I understand that the rent can be much higher, that here they have this, this piece of property that they're allowed to build this house on, or they want to build a house on. And does their land value suddenly become so much less because they can only build a house on there that supports 30 occupants as opposed to 48 occupants? You know, it just seems, it just seems a little crazy. You know what I mean? Do we stop at 50 occupants or 60 occupants or, you know, I mean, where, where does it become a big, huge problem? I mean, if they're looking at this, I mean, 30 occupants seems like a pretty big house to make. And then you can make a significant amount of money from it, you know?
What is our smallest hotel?
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, five bedrooms.
How many people does our smallest hotel have?
I think probably does. What's a small motel nowadays? What's a small?
I've heard 16 or 60 rooms was kind of the breakpoint.
Yeah, what do you think the smaller motel in Killalilis, how many rooms you think you would have now?
Size of the room or?
No, no, the number, the number of rooms.
The hotel's average probably about 80. There's some that are 20, 20, I mean, not that many.
It's not uncommon to put houses on commercial property, but now it seems like we're almost putting semi-commercial properties on residential lots.
Well, especially when you get to this size, when you get to a 24 bedroom house, my concern, especially after like all the fires that have been up in Corral and that kind of stuff, you almost, just me personally, I think you would need a fire suppression system. I would think you would need some of the, some of the things that maybe, and maybe they are required, I don't, I don't know if they are required or whether or not, I mean, if they're not, they should be, I would think. You've got that many people sleeping in it.
One of the crazy things about sprinkler systems, I, I think the fire chief would know this more than anyone, is that insurance companies in general, sprinkler systems cause more damage than fireworks do. Now we're putting a sprinkler system in a rental home where the people don't really care, you know, for the most part, you know, and, you know, whether there's, yeah, heads knocked off or how, whatever happens, now we're becoming, it's becoming even more of a problem. You know, it's just, you know, there's, there's so many issues when you become, start requiring those kind of systems. You know, I came from a county where every single family home after, I think it was the seventies, had to be sprinkler. And it became a big, huge issue because, you know, the sprinkler systems in the, in your, in your home where you care, became a problem because of the activations.
DEF of the teacher housing over here, and they just are in the process of spending thousands of dollars for bird mitigation for their sprinklers. I mean, that, they're too vulnerable, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's a huge issue, like once you start requiring that, you know, there's more to it than just saying, oh, we're going to, you know, we're going to, we need this to protect the building or the house, but it becomes a problem when there isn't a fire.
Every year I go, well, his own builder, some of his, one guy's tow trucks, but every year that brings failed sprinkler parts. And every year it's a new batch of failed sprinkler parts that destroyed a house or something because of the sprinklers system just failed. I mean, it is.
Yeah, you have the winter time where people want to kind of shut their houses down so, you know, it becomes a freezing issue and then, oh, well, maybe you have it for a week, you know, in December, so now somebody has to, you know, they have to go through the process of, you know, making sure that everything's okay again. So, yeah, it's a problem.
Well, how about this, because I know, wait, we will, there's consensus, add this to the October commissioners meeting to, for the board, the Board of Commissioners, to met this, based on this discussion, what I've heard is bulk seems to be the biggest Look at the potential of, maybe even some incentives entering it, commercial versus residential on the ocean impact because of, I think, their safety concerns or whatnot. See if we can come up with any type of guidance at that meeting to give planning staff. If we can't come up with any type of guidance, then we can't just throw it on them, we're not, and throw it back at you guys. So we would have to at least, the other come up.
I don't want to send it back to us.
Yeah, well, I don't, like I said, I'm not very ready to send it. So if we can, between now and then, have discussions with folks, talk to other stakeholders, be prepared to have a true discussion at our meeting, see if we can come up with anything to go to planning staff, if planning staff can bring something to you all that would come back to you either late October, early November. If they can't, then it sits until something can come up with some guidance. We have two, I think one of them is a public forum.
Was there a timeframe on the shared revenue issue? Have you heard about that?
Well, if it's pulled out of the state budget, I don't know if that's officially happened or if that's just part of the negotiations, but, you know, they're in conference committee. No, really, it's the short answer because.
They're dead, like July 1.
They're going to have to pass another budget resolution by Saturday to continue on with the existing budget. This is not going to be addressed by then, so I don't know whether they're going to give themselves another 45 days or 60 days. And then this could be pulled out now and addressed as a separate bill and if so, who knows with him, that could go on. I think actually this session is going to make sense. Anyone else have anything else they want to comment on this? Are we?
I'm a little slow, so I still don't know if we defined the issue, what in the world we're trying to do here. And part of the discussion, I have to look at the irony of this stuff. I mean, we're saying some of these bigger homes are so expensive and we're limited to, to order them and we're pushing folks out, but at the same time, you know, the argument was used to reduce the FAR. What people were saying just provides alternative rental condos for that family that can't afford a 15 bedroom home. Or, you know, trying to carve out hotels from the reduction in the FAR because, you know, now we're saying hotels are a good thing for alternative things, it's very confusing. Just to say a little bit, so if we got to struggle to figure out how to come up with a regulation on something we're not sure about, then I think that right there says it's a pretty far-reaching issue.
And you're right, with these countermeasures, if you allow higher density, you might have lower rates for the consumer, but the market will find that saying more valuable than Maxx has. You go in the opposite direction, the opposite thing happens and you reduce bulk, you also reduce the revenue of your town and your ability to support the people that you have. There is no easy answer here at all.
I'm just, Eddie, at this point, I'm not sure even what the question is.
I think we're looking for a way, like we're just opening up a discussion. How do they, this is going to happen?
Well, I mean, bottom line is we've had folks that have come to us and voiced concerns and this is, this is what we do today. We have our position about it and determine if we go further. And the right answer may be nothing right now. I think we wouldn't be doing the right thing if we were afraid of some folks coming in.
Well, the purpose of tonight, and maybe we should have started with that, the purpose of tonight was truly to have these exploratory conversations to see where we are. It was not to walk away that we were going to solve this tonight, so.
I don't think.
Yeah. Anyway, anything else in this room?
Where's your?
Okay, I think on our agenda we do have public comment. Eddie, any public comment?
I don't particularly like a big house, even, and as soon as one of them done rent, like they say, they'll stop building. And I think it's a matter of time, I don't really see it lasting, but I don't see it forever. Your idea about the charge court, Maxx has is put that back in their organs, to remember. So you can take, basically, and they say three quarters of an acre, if one particular side is three quarters of an acre, you can build four four bedroom houses. Well, that's 16 then. And it's basically no bigger than an oceanfront lot. Another solution. And it's the same, it will be the same number of bedrooms, but smaller houses that are better look. I think that's a real good idea.
And is it?
And as you, we got better storm management, smaller houses, one septic system, or you central, whatever, but then your parking.
And for a fact, you know, an oceanfront lot in Killalilis that sells for 1.2 B, it will only sell for 800,000 in Maxx. Because of the bedroom, that's just a back logic.
It's kind of nice not being the, the group that pushed this out there. Change. I'll just make one personal comment. I, I live in a very modest neighborhood in, in a half mile from the Kitty Hawk Line in the North End, and, you know, those are pretty modest houses. And what I'm seeing is six or seven cars parked in front of a three bedroom house. So honestly, I don't know where all these people are coming from that get together to rent a 24 bedroom house. It does seem to me that we've got to be sure that we've got these houses for the folks who come down here who really don't have a whole lot of money. I sort of think that's the core of our folks, that they're regular folks, middle class folks. That's just what I'm noticing this year, a lot of cars outside of the regular, normal three and four bedroom houses, awful lot of people jamming in those houses. Obviously, I've got the money to rent a 16 bedroom.
Well, they all stay filled. I think that's the interesting thing is that we have a ton of, we have a ton of inventory that's built in the seventies and hasn't been upgraded and still has the picture of grandma on the wall and the vehicle that's.
Wait a minute, that's my mouse.
I love them, they're charming, they're, they're great and they still exist in ski towns too, where you have older inventory that people love and are continuing to get, continue to use them. And I, like I said, even though we're always worried, gosh, 40% of our revenue comes from that one little strip of sand on that side of the beach road, but just remember that means 60% comes from the rest of the town and it's probably not 60% of the tourists, it's probably 70 or 80% of the tourists because those beds cost a lot more on the oceanfront than the bed one or two blocks back. So we really are cutting down, like, three quarters of the people coming to Killalilis are staying in three or four bedroom house tops, three quarters of them. So, and the ones that are up front are just having to suffer with their distant cousins on their foot in order to get to Grand Countertop of the oceanfront view. If they're willing to make that sacrifice, then God bless them.
I have probably a few people say that they're all, they said it was, they say once, but they'll never, they'll never do it again.
Chinese fire drills.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? Do we, any response to public comment? Seriously, I'm rare.
I just want to say that I really appreciate you guys coming together to have this discussion. It's the back and forth and the sharing of ideas, I think that's what makes us so strong. I think that, you know, we need to look at where we're going. Just do what you want is not going to be enough to sustain us. People don't want to come to the Outer Banks when they can go to Virginia Beach because it's closer to where they live. They want to come here because it's special. And I want to continue to challenge you to continue to find ways to find the compromise and to continue to look at the unintended consequences. And Travis, I know that you talked about the homes down near your father-in-law's that have had people in the day one. I've been back here like feverishly texting all my friends in property management and in the real estate side of things, and our largest rental home does not have good occupancy right now. So we're going back to, okay, we're going to throw up these really huge houses and what's going to happen when they don't rent and the people aren't making their money and then they wind up losing the house, so they're going to sell it at a lower value so their property values go down? Or we're going to look at another big foreclosure market, these big houses, why are people going to come when everything's falling apart on the Outer Banks? It's not a small issue, it's super complicated and it's a very tangled web and I, I really appreciate the fact that you guys are really trying to think down the road and do what's best for our growing town and doing it in a thoughtful and, and professional way. So thank you for that. Thank you to your families. All right, anything else? Okay, then we will adjourn. Thank you.